Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Patsy Bruscher, Chairman of the Norwalk Charter Revision Commission. And I'm going to take a roll call, so please identify yourself for the record. Anita Watford-Rawley.
Earl Dickens.
Rick McQuaid.
I'm Herman.
And I believe Angela Wassuna is joining us soon, but we do have a forum. So we will open the meeting officially. Tonight has been advertised as a public hearing and a public meeting. And so I thought it might be good to start out. I don't know how many people we have on the hybrid Zoom in attendance. I can't see.
Right now we have five.
Five, okay. I just want to get an idea of how many people want to speak because we're anxious to have people give us some input. So before we start there, I thought it would be good to just run through some of the the history of what we have been doing over the last five, six, seven months. So to that end, I found it interesting that a majority of our time that we've been working on is trying to bring our charter that was created in 1913 up 110 years to 2023. And I look back to some of the records that I could find and I, what I found was the population in Norwalk in 1913 was around 25,000 people. And now we're around 91, 92, 93, and obviously it's changing every day and it's definitely going up. It's not going down. So I thought that's a good reference to try to help us put the charge that we've been given into perspective and how we need to modernize our charter and to bring it up to the current functionings of our government and the changes that have happened throughout the 110 years. So to that end, one of the things that we started with, areas that we started with initially was to really reorganize the charter. Oh, I noticed now that we have Commissioners Michael Witherspoon is also with us in the meeting. Thank you. So we have spent a lot of time of the charter, if you've read it recently, is quite disorganized. And so one of the things that we initially started with was to try to bring all the different pieces that are spread out through the charter into different charters, chapters and articles. So that's been part of our concern. And at the same time, changing the legal lease and the archaic wording so that everybody can understand what these things mean. And to that end, we have been working on establishing a table of content which our current charter does not have. And we've been defining the terminologies within the charter itself and definitions and the common terms so that we've articulated those in the very beginning or will be articulating those in the very beginning of the charter so that as people then go back and and read through the charter, they have a good reference to what, what the terms actually mean. We have been meeting with all the department heads and different constituencies with throughout the last several months to try to get input and getting input from the budget, the financial structure of our, of our charter and how things are functioning today with, we met with the Board of Education a couple of meetings ago. Our last meeting, we met with the sheriff, the constables and the selectmen to see what their feelings were in terms of, did they really have a function that they were performing now? And so we had some, some input from them. We have been discussing and some of our previous commentary meetings. We have heard from people that were interested in changing the term of the mayor from two to four years and to change the council, council term possibly. So we've been looking in that and getting input from different people on that subject. We've been talking about increasing the commissioners on our fire commission, our police commission and our health commission from the currently three to five members. It's one of the things that we've been talking with. We met with the Board of Education about a month ago and the, there's no real major change there other than the fact that, that they have some that were advocating that, that we learn and disclose what multiple, any multiple year contracts or agreements that they have. So that, that goes into the budgetary process so that we know in advance what the potential exposure for any of these things are. And we have been establishing a budgetary calendar and trying to make the operating budget and the capital budget processes more understandable and more consistent with each other. And so that there would be a public calendar within the charter. So that would be followed year to year. Let's see, I made some notes here. For instance, one of the things in the charter, there's no reference to collective bargaining, which didn't exist in 1913, but is obviously very much with us right now. So we're dealing with that. And another item that came up was to change the date of the start of a term of the mayor and the council from the current timing to the first business day of January. And the comments that came and the request for that concept was that it really, the incumbent mayor does not, needs an opportunity to establish their team and, and to be able to appoint them. And we're working on some language that, that there would be a trans, transition opportunity from one administration to the, to the other. So that's recognized and respected and honored in an appropriate way. So these are some of the things that we've been dealing with. I haven't covered everything, I'm sure. So I just thought I'd mention that. And I think what we would do is take one person from, that it's present here and then one Larry from, from the, from Zoom. So if you can help me with that, and we will adhere to the three minute usual input timing for anybody that wants to suggest things or ask us questions. There, there will be official hearings when we, when we finalize our recommendations. So there'll, there'll be other opportunities for everybody to respond once we have finalized what we are suggesting the changes. Yes, Mr. Levin?
If anyone would like to speak remotely, please raise your hand now.
Oh, I, I was going to start with somebody here, which I mentioned.
Yes, we'll, we'll start with Lisa Brinton.
Oh, okay. They've signed in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Lisa? Yes, yeah.
Lisa, I'll give you a one minute.
Yeah, I'm going to eliminate a couple of things. I didn't know if we were adhering to the three minutes, so.
Well, we're going to try to.
Yeah, I have, it's all.
Our intent is we really want to get input, you know?
Gotcha. Um, I can either look at you guys or I couldn't be able to read my notes. Lisa Britton, 19 Shorefront Park. I am quite familiar and I applaud your efforts to update a 1913 charter. I have a copy of it right here. We, we have Mrs. Eldridge's, you know, $780 payment listed in the charter. So I'm quite well familiar with how archaic it is. I also, a couple of years ago, in the last charter revision, I benchmarked 22 Connecticut municipalities in terms of their structure of government. I was very interested in what we were trying to do last, you know, in 16 and again, interested this year. I'm going to put my comments and reserve them to three particular areas because it's a lot of content. I appreciate you recapping, you know, what you guys are trying to do.
That might help.
And so my comments are in the general update areas and the elimination of offices. The, that's one area, the BOE oversight and finally the mayor and the common council. So, and then if I have any extra time, I'll say what I was going to say at the beginning. Regarding the general updates, the defunct offices, I support most of what you've, you've said, Madam Chair, in terms of getting rid of outdated offices that are on the ballot, updating the processes of language. I think that's excellent. I agree with getting rid of selectmen, the treasurer, the sheriff. In, in simple terms, we now have a chief of police, we have council and mayor, and we have, we have a BET. I support in simplifying the ballot. That's really what we're trying to do. With regards to the constables, you probably could cut those down. It seems to be a relationship between law firms and them, so not fussed on that. So I wholeheartedly endorse eliminating old positions and getting, cleaning up the ballot. With, with regard to increasing the BOE oversight, any language increase in the oversight of the board of expenses addresses only half of the issue in the city. We need oversight on city revenue as well. I mean, this includes the land use, the zoning, the tax assessments, the abatements and ordinance enforcement. And I appreciate the need to try and tighten the relationship and the finances between the board of and the city. But the transparency and the, and that oversight, I think, needs to apply to both the revenue as well as the expenses. My entire activist career in the city has been predicated on the fact that Norwalk has never synchronized its strategy between its planning and zoning and its education, despite the fact that one funds the other. And it doesn't matter who's been in office. It doesn't matter which political party. We've never done it. And this is unusual despite the fact that, you know, along with Stanford, 85% of our board of it's funded by us, not the state. I feel the board of it failed to publicly articulate the costs they're directly attributing, you know, their overruns on things. And I just wanted to highlight that, most of which are driven by state policies, both immigration, driving our higher, more high need students without funding, as well as exclusionary zoning that drives more poverty stricken students into our, our district.
You got about one minute.
Budget issues are attributed to overly generous tax abatements, as I've said, and lack of ordinance enforcement of multi-unit landlords. And so again, any oversight on the board of ed, I think you've really got to look at how we do our zoning. I know we're overhauling it in terms of zoning rules, but we've really never looked at the funding side. I wrote an op-ed today and I'll upload it to your website, the mayor and the common council. My thoughts on the four-year term for mayor are the same as they were in 2016. Any term change must be tied to the council to ensure checks and balances. I support a four-year mayoral term. I, I will support it if it also applies to the council because any change in the mayor's office should encourage and preserve and promote democracy, not consolidate it. Norwalk, I also support minority party rule, minority, excuse me, minority party representation. Norwalk is one of only three towns out of 169 in Connecticut that has no stipulation in its council for minority party representation. Cheshire and Meriden are two other towns. Meriden has a city manager. I won't bore you with my thoughts on a city manager. Again, I'm going to upload my op-ed today onto your website so you can look at that. But if you tie a four-year term to all your efforts this, this year, I fear it will, it will fail. I'm happy to share with you, Madam Chair, I can upload this, all the work I did a couple of years ago. I'm assuming, Mr. Medneck, you probably are aware of anything changes that have happened in any of the other towns. But it is really good to benchmark and see how Norwalk stacks up against other cities in terms of all of its major offices. So.
Appreciate that.
I, I thank you for the time and thank you very much for.
And will you be going to give us that copy and then I'll get it out to the rest of them?
Yeah, I can, I can, I'm more than happy to share that with you. And then I will upload my, if those of you haven't read my op-ed today, I wasn't going to bore you with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Now I hear from someone that's on Zoom.
That's me. Please remind people.
Oh, yes.
Please raise your hands if you'd like to speak. We don't have anyone remotely with their hand raised.
Yeah, I'm. I'm not sure I heard you, Michael. Could you please? Uh, you're, I didn't.
Me?
Yeah.
I was just going to say as a reminder, I mean, for Lisa or anyone else, if you're not able to get all your comments in in three minutes, please feel free to mail it in.
Yes, okay. I hope everybody heard that. Okay. Someone is online.
No one remote has their hand raised.
Okay, well then let's move to someone that's here. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes. Benny? Yana? Okay, and please, to the record, please, now that our other commissioner has joined us, Angela Wassuna is now with us on Zoom.
Good evening. I'll be, I'll be fairly brief for only make two minutes. I'd like to thank everyone for your.
Your name and address, okay?
What's that?
Your name and address, please.
Yeah, Tishikatano, Winding Lane, Norwalk.
Thank you.
I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone for your work and your effort here. I really appreciate it. I think, I think North really appreciates it. I'd like to just comment that, I'd like to take this opportunity to real, to bring real change to the stakeholders and residents of Norwalk. The seventh of Norwalk residents will have an opportunity to vote in favor or against adoption of a proposed new city charter should the council move it forward. Public input has begun and passion not simply be in the hands of seven citizens appointed and the common council. It's imperative that this opportunity for revision of the city charter focuses on improvements of checks and balances by addressing the issues and concerns that our local government faces. If more power and extension of the mayoral term is given to the mayor, the voting public is then further distance from decision making. The proposed new city charter has brought forth discussions of four-year term for mayor. Significant zoning changes to Norwalk's neighborhoods, continued appointed boards and commissions, as well as no mention of minority party representation on the council. I believe there's a, is an unfair balance of representation in this community. It's a lot of people that feel disenfranchised and I think you should take this opportunity to make them more inclusive, that more inclusive input in, in all the processes in Norwalk. So with this opportunity, our Norwalk residents to be involved in a process, I hope we can get more people out. I'm actually very disappointed with how many people are here this evening. I'm actually very surprised, but hopefully we can get people more involved to really build a community that they really want. So I would say that we must use this opportunity to combat one-party rule so that everyone in Norwalk has a voice and input. I believe the position such as, you know, BET and other commissions should be moved to the people. I think we should have some of these top level point, appointments changed to elected positions. I think it would be a fair representation of everyone in town. And I believe that people would know exactly what they're getting when they, when they put someone in these positions. And I would just, like, once again, thank you for all your hard work. And I think that everything comes down to kind of one thing. I hope this panel can measure twice and cut once to the point that everyone in town is satisfied. And I know that we're probably never, everyone happy, I get that. But if we can make everyone feel included and have everybody's input included in this process, I think it's something that will last for another 100 years. Because I think 100 years ago, that's definitely what they, what they had in mind. I just want to thank you again. Thank you very much. And I hope you consider all the Norwalkers and the residents of this community. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And, and just to reiterate, there will be other pub, public hearings before we present anything to the council. All right, anybody online?
Yes, next we have Diane LaRocella.
Okay, Diane? You better. In place.
She'll be joining in a sec.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Diane LaRocella. I live in 21 Little Fox Lane. First of all, I wanted to thank this august body for the hours and hours of work as well as Attorney Mednick, the staff that have assisted. Definitely, this is a yeoman's job and not an easy one. I wanted also to thank the council and the mayor who allowed this body to formulate and study and change because that is part of the process. I wanted to thank you for your virtual option. For me, this has made quite a difference tonight. I, I first wanted to say overall, I really like the way that this has been laid out and reorganized. It's, it's still of course, very detailed, but it is easier to read. My years of training as a League of Women Voters official and a member lets me feel that this is definitely much of an improvement. I just wanted to make some quick suggestions and I will be forwarding and writing more detail. In general, I feel that the issue of the number of years that the mayor's term should be commensurate with council. I also feel that we should very strongly look at this time increasing the number of people on the council. Because in theory, then they would be assigned to fewer committees and in theory would be able to spend more time doing their own due diligence and speaking to their constituents instead of heavily relying upon the staff alone for their informed decision. So that's something that I don't think has been discussed yet. I think it could be discussed this time around because life is short and we don't know when the next Charter Revision Commission could come. I do think we should add members to the police and fire commission and to the health, the board of health. I do think there should be a citizen police review board. I've been advocating for that for several years, even before George Floyd. It appears to me that any additions or changes to the actual types of boards, commissions, committees is handled in the ordinance process, and that is a question that I have. I think that is the case because I do have some suggestions there that I will present to the council ordinance committee. I do, as far as the issue of minority representation, it's, it's a tough issue. I mean, once again, I remember when the Democrats were in the minority. And the thing is, I'm not saying that to the victors come the spoils. I do think we would want to consider minority representation on some boards and commissions. And in fact, we already do. My understanding is that we do on a small amount of entities. But we should consider minority representation for whatever parties are in the minority in some circumstances. Of course, we always hope that we will have better candidates or more choices so that then the voters can indeed increase the, the different opinions on any entity, including the council. I do think we should look at the pay of the council. I do not think it is fair that we kind of slough this off till the next. I do agree with Ms. Nicole Ayers, Ms. Jen McMura. These are currently some of the council women that are, have children that, and families that they are still taking care of. And I do think it's an issue of accessibility. So I want to highlight, put a, shine a light on this pay of the common council. And I do think we can make a good, it should be a separate item on during, in November. And I do think there's a lot of reasons to do so so that more people feel they can spend the time it takes to be a good council person.
One minute, Diane.
All right. On the issue of Article Two, page 13, public notice, rule, page 16, two dash four, rules of order and civility. I wanted to make sure, while I, I do love the wording that is used in the verbiage, I have experienced time of intolerance. So I do not know if this would be in the ordinance, this is a question, whether there needs to be mandatory training of all of those public officials, both elected and appointed about gender equity, about racial bias and other, other things. There needs to be training so that we can some, somehow meet a mode of civility at times in some of our boards and commissions and council meetings. Because isolation or lack of getting back to citizens, which does happen on occasion and is still happening on occasion, that is not a form of civility. And I know you all know that. I do believe that many of the things on page 16 and, and the copy about diversity of boards and commissions, the number of women are not being achieved right now on several important boards and commissions. No matter what the happy talk is telling you, it is not occurring. The Harbor Commission and Shellfish are one of those, just one. Board of Estimate is another. And this has been the case for years. So if there could be any enabling legis, language on page two dash six about diversity on boards and commissions to almost force it to happen instead of just waiting for it to happen, I would very much enjoy that. I thank you again for all of the work you're doing. I have many other suggestions, but I will have to forward them in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think I'll just mention, I, I neglected to, to mention this when I started the evening, is that we are really focused on suggesting that the charter be reviewed again within two to three years. And then in the charter that there would be a requirement that it would be reviewed every, at a minimum of every five years in order to preclude the kind of accumulated confusion that time passes, when time passes. So that can address some, it's sort of a response to some of the comments that have already been made. So we thought that would be a way to cover the fact that we've been charged with such a big amount of effort to just restructure it that any of the things that we can accomplish this time, there would be an opportunity within two to three years to review it again. So is there someone from on Zoom that I'd like to? Oh, I'm sorry, we're here, we're here. And I have the list, which I turned over. I'm sorry.
I believe there's one more on the list.
It's Donna?
Yeah.
Yep. And Mr. Levin is not here.
Good evening. My name is Donna Smarniopopoulos, 18 Shorefront Park. Thank you all for your dedicated service to what must be an onerous task of reviewing a charter that has not been revised since, what was it, 1913? To Madam Chairwoman's point about embedding in the charter, the recommendation that the charter be revised periodically, I would like to remind everyone here that at the conclusion of the last Charter Revision Commission, the chairperson recognized that they had not been able to finish all the work that needed to be accomplished. And he recommended that the Charter Revision Commission be reconvened immediately. And because of the majority rule of the common council, there were not sufficient votes on the council to enable this. So I think putting it into the charter is the way to go if it is to be reviewed because otherwise, no matter which parties in the majority, they have the power to say no. I agree with many of the points that were brought up by my friend and neighbor Lisa Brinton regarding the charter. I have no problem with eliminating some of the jobs that have no, no function right now. I would also like to remind everyone that seven years ago, when, when the last charter revision process ended, it is obvious that Lisa Brinton knows a great deal about charter revision. And it's interesting that she spoke to the mayor then about participating on the Charter Revision Commission that was to be reconvened. And I think it's significant that when it comes time to make appointments, that sometimes you have a municipal leader who is not interested in building a team of rivals. And, and you have an opportunity here as a Charter Revision Commission to create a bulwark against that. There are a couple of ways to do that. One way is to take Mr. Shikatano's suggestion to have some of these boards and commissions be elected bodies. I came from the town of Westport where the land use body, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they were all elected. I believe the zoning board of appeals may have been elected. And the board of finance, which would be equivalent to our board of estimate and taxation, were also elected positions. I would love to see at least the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Estimate Taxation be elected positions. It is not enough, based on my observations of Norwalk and the appointment process, it is not enough to simply require that there be minority party representation. it is not enough to simply require that there be minority party representation. And I think, pardon me, that what we see happening in practice is it is impossible to get an appointment to any board or commission unless, I mean, I hate to, for lack of a better word, but if you are not on the list of people who is, if you've ever been critical of the leadership, you will not get an appointment. That's the most blunt way I can put it. I don't know how that can be, how you can create a charter that prevents that practice. But I don't think it's healthy for the democratic process in the city of Norwalk, for whoever the elected mayor is, to keep dipping into the same well over and over again. So there needs to be a way to encourage diversity of opinion on our boards and commissions. And if there's a way to do that in charter, I would be a hundred percent in favor of it. And also, I don't know, again, if this would be under the purview of Charter Revision, but I think that there are a number of state appointments. We had recently two employees appointed to state commissions. There is a lot of double dipping, and I think as a practice, again, it's not healthy for our democracy. Madam Chairwoman, you mentioned that we have about ninety-one thousand people living here. Most of those, many of them are registered voters. There are many more people eligible to serve than the people who are currently being chosen. No disrespect to anybody who is currently serving on a board or commission, but I would encourage diversity of opinion as well as minority party representation. However you get there, if it's by having some of these boards and commissions be elected, I would applaud that. And I thank you so much for your time, and I know this is difficult words, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, anybody? There's nobody online?
If anyone else online would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight, Reverend Johnny Cardamoni, sixty-two Lockwood Lane. And thank you, has been acknowledged the hard work that went into implementing this commission for this revision. I have two questions, I believe, another may come to my mind. Regarding the change of term for the mayor, possibly two to four years, has term limits been considered, especially if it were to change to a four-year term?
I'll ask our council to respond to that.
Steve, you need to unmute, there you go.
I'm happy, yeah, I'm happy to respond. In the state of Connecticut, term limits are not permitted by law. There's no grant of authority that would allow a municipality to limit a term of office.
So we're under the state authority or restriction in that regard?
Yeah.
All, everything we do is, has to be an express grant of authority from the state. There's no inherent rights on the part of local government.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And regarding the discussion over minority representation, I'm a new Realtor this past year. I believe the State Realtor Board, correct me if I'm wrong, is nine members and it's minority representation required, so you have to have five Democrats and five Republicans. And I've been unaffiliated since I was eighteen for forty-five years and joined the Republican Party this past year. But it was mentioned the other night by Fred Wilmes, back under Frank Esposito, a term that there was on the council, five Democrats, five Republicans, and five independents, and they got more done than has ever been accomplished before that or since. And so I think many of us do express concern over what we see as a monopolizing, both local and Congress, in our Senate, in our governor, and nationally, and feel there is a lack of representation. And so I would urge that that minority consideration would be taken very seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any hands raised? Good.
Next, we have Eliza. Eliza, if you will accept the invitation to be a panelist?
I, excuse me if I did it wrong, I raised my hand.
Yep, you're fine.
Okay, hi, I'm Elsa Peterson Obachowski, forty-one East Avenue. And I wasn't going to say anything, but when I just heard the comment about term limits. But, so if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the boards and commissions do have term limits. Is that right? I seem to remember when I was on the Oak Hills Park Authority, you could serve only two, three-year terms.
That's true.
I don't know, Steve, are you able to?
Yeah, I don't believe you have term limits in Norwalk. You can have term limits on boards and commissions, you cannot have term limits for elected officials.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Check on that point, I know that there are some, I believe you're correct.
They may have some internal rules, but I don't believe there's a general prohibition, a cap on terms. A number of cities do have caps on terms on boards and commissions to encourage turnover.
Sure. Right, so I'll just take this opportunity to thank the Charter Revision Commission for all of your hard work. I have read through the charter and I know what a task it must be for you, so thank you for everything you're doing.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so now we have John Levin. I didn't sign up though, but that's fine, John Levin?
John Levin, two forty-nine Chestnut Hill Road, Norwalk, Connecticut. Quick question for Attorney Mednick. I'm wondering, can term limits be enacted through a special act of the state legislature?
Absolutely, well, it could be, Madam Chair, if I may respond.
Please.
Sorry, it can be enacted by a general act or a special act. There are, just to give you, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'll just do a little primer.
That's what this is all about.
Okay, a little primer on home rule. Back in the mid nineteen eighties, I argued a case at the Supreme Court regarding recall of elected officials, which is another issue very similar to term limits. And the Supreme Court ruled that since there was no express grant of authority, municipalities could not adopt in a charter revision process, recall. There are five communities, however, in the state of Connecticut that have recall because they have special acts. Your special act does not include recall and does not include term limits. But your legislators in Hartford are fully capable and for adopting and promoting legislation, proposing legislation, and seeking majority support for legislation that would institute either recall or term limits. But without the express grant of authority from the state, we have no ability to do it at the local level.
Okay, I think that's actually a really important point, and I would encourage this commission to share that information with the public and emphasize it that in fact, the constraints that are imposed upon Norwalk by the state can be modified through legislation at the state level. So special acts have been used in the past by Norwalk and of course, other towns as well to create permissions that would not otherwise be available. And because special acts are available, Norwalk could have term limits and recalls of elected officials if we could get it through our state legislature. This is all possible, I think that's worth sharing.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification?
Yes.
Of Attorney Mednick? Can you hear me? Attorney Mednick?
Yeah, you can hear me.
Would it be, the term limits, would that be a request that the delegation be on behalf of their town? Or is it something that would need to be statewide? Like say there was a petition, I mean, how does that work? I'm just curious for the state law.
Well, it would be up to individual members of the legislature, a delegation from a municipality. If they were petitioned to do this and they wanted to be responsive to the petition, they could introduce the legislation, and then they would have to get it through the state legislature, both houses and signed by the governor.
So would it be dealt with on a hundred and sixty-nine town basis? Or would you, like, would there be, would you see, is something you do on a per-city basis or per-town basis? Or would you?
Yeah. To Mr. Levin's point earlier, one of the reasons we're here tonight is home rule has given us the ability to adopt local charters. As a rule, it doesn't eliminate special acts, but it reduces the legislative involvement in special acts. So you don't see a lot of special legislation. The ones I talked about with the five towns that have recall in the state of Connecticut are all pre-nineteen fifty-seven towns that had special acts with those unique characteristics, those unique authorities in their communities. As a rule, the legislature does not adopt special act legislation, but they can, and they do from time to time. So if there was a unique matter for Norwalk and your legislators went up there and said, "We don't want to burden the rest of the state with this, but we'd like to amend our charter in a way that we cannot without general legislation." If they're able to persuade the members of the legislature that that is meritorious, and they get a majority and the governor signs it, then you can have that kind of legislation. But I'm saying it's not usual, it's not the norm in the modern era for the legislature to grant special legislation of that nature. But it can be done. Or they could do it generally to make it effective throughout the entire state to give everybody the local option to do it.
Well, let's, is there somebody else waiting online?
No.
You sure? Let's, anybody online wants to speak, please put your hand up.
Yes, next we have Diane Cece.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I've been promoted to panelist, I'm so pleased. I'm honored. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for holding another session and listening to public comment. I've been listening because I like to learn from the folks who are serving, but also my friends and neighbors and residents here and listen to what their comments and suggestions and concerns are. I just want to say a few things. I would open by saying that, unlike others, I am generally in favor of a four-year mayoral term. I'm not quite sure how this specific topic came back up in this review of the charter, though, having had it overwhelmingly rejected in two thousand sixteen. But I know that Chairwoman Brisha mentioned that a number of people had asked for it to be included, and so here we are talking about it again. But the same is in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, I would say that my support of four-year terms for mayors, for the mayor here, makes good sense in terms of productivity and continuity. However, I would be opposed to it in the absence of term limit or recall. And one of the things I had suggested, and I think others may have as well, maybe we even did in two thousand sixteen, was that there'd be a two-year or three, or two or three-term limit, depending on who you were speaking to. But there could then be a break in the time someone served and they could then rerun for office again. So I think it's something that should be considered. Along those same lines, I just wanted to mention to Attorney Mednick that early on in this process, when you were addressing these issues about whether or not the statutes allow it, I had actually asked the governor the question personally on the radio. And he said he was unaware of anything that prohibits it. And I think this really gets to the whole question with how state laws, it's not that it would be prohibiting, it would be whether or not it allows it. And when I was doing my own research, just what you were speaking about with home rule and special acts, I came across a document from two thousand one from the Office of Legislative Research where they referenced a case in nineteen seventy-nine. Hopefully it'll mean something to you, Caulfield versus Noble. And in that case, after other cases in deliberation about home rule and recall, it said here in the research paper that in the case of Caulfield versus Noble, it was a New Canaan case, and that the Supreme Court upheld a local charter provision on the ground that the Home Rule Act authorizes a delegation of the power to address issues of local concern, exclusive of the provisions of general statutes. And that particular case was, or that case was in particular to recall, I believe, but I don't know how far they dove into term limits. So I'm interested in that whole concept of what you were just explaining to all of us about the possibility of having this special consideration here under home rule. And then I would also suggest that if we're able to look at that, that there's, that there would be term limits also for the common council and perhaps some other elected bodies as well. The, I also want to say that as the last go-around, and I think one of the other speakers mentioned it too, that I think at the very least, when we're looking at the size and components of our commissions, I do think that there needs to be better diverse representation. And in some cases, there needs to be guidelines for minority party representation as well. But I've been particularly concerned for a long time and still am about the lack of commissioners that serve on the Police Commission and Traffic Authority. And particularly those, because there's only three people that serve. And in the case of police and traffic, one of those people happens to be whoever the city mayor is. And I'm also in favor of a police citizen review board as well, and I hope that's something that can be put back on the table during this go-around. The other thing that I just want to mention is that I think, you know, I'll wear two different hats, so I've just said all those things to you is Diane Cece, but I'll flip my hat now over to Board for East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. We struggle to, you know, get the word out to people, and we do, you know, the best job as we can. But I think, you know, that the burden shouldn't fall to volunteers and nonprofit and, you know, civic organizations, even though we're doing our best to help. And I think the city really needs to take a look at using everything in a possible toolbox to get the word out to people. It's one thing if people know about this process, and yes, it's not the sexiest thing to be involved in or the most exciting. It's one thing if people know about it, that it's happening, they understand what it is and the importance of it, and they choose not to participate. But it's a completely different animal if we get to a point where this thing may be voted on and people say, "What is the charter?" And what is this charter revision? And oh, by the way, what are these lawn signs all over the place? So, which could happen again. Damon, you know, all of us, you know, if that's the case. And then I wanted to close by saying, you don't be interested in that, but I hope that you will. Is it my understanding that whatever ends up going forward is literally an up or down vote on the ballot? So you're either voting to revamp the revision, the charter revision, or thumbs down, correct? And is that correct? And maybe I'll modify my comment.
And you got one minute, Diane.
That's okay, Steve, do you want to address that?
Let me address, if I may, I'll address two or three things, and then we can extend it, we could freeze our time for the.
The time's turned off.
Okay. With regard to the final question, it really depends on how many questions the common council places on the ballot. So if there are multiple questions, so for example, if you're, if they have one question regarding the structure of the document. Um, and that passes and the structure of the document would be enacted. There could be items within that document that are pulled out for individual questions, whether it's a four year term for mayor, for example, to give you one that um in many communities is pulled out as a separate vote. Um, you can vote up or down on that, and you still would enact the reforms of the document if uh if that question passes. So you, it really depends on how it is framed. If the general, if the if the common council votes to put everything in one question and it's voted down, it's voted down. So it really becomes a political judgment of the on the part of the common council and how they present the question to the voters. So that's that that's number one, Miss C C. On on the other issue, I'm um, tell the governor, I'm very happy to talk to him about home rule. Um, that uh he did not state the proper standard for home rule. It's not a function of what the state has prohibited. It's really a function of what the state has expressly granted. And in the case of recall and um term limits, there's no express grant of authority uh for term limits or recall in the state of Connecticut. Uh Caulfield versus Noble, uh, and I'll be happy, please send over to uh our staff uh that legislative uh research document from two thousand one, I think I'm familiar with it, though. Um Caulfield Noble was about mill rates, it was not about um um, it was not about recall or um or uh term limits, it was about um uh mill rates, which are matters of local concern. Um, elections are not. Elections are a matter of state concern, Title Nine of the general statutes um govern state elections. You'll see one of the things we are uh eliminating from this charter this time around are a lot of arcane old provisions from the town days uh that remain in the charter, because the truth of the matter is, our elections are governed by Title Nine. Uh, so um, I'd love to see that report uh the and there was a Supreme Court case in nineteen eighty six called Simons versus Canty, which explicitly um uh outlawed or prohibited recall in the state of Connecticut, as I said a few moments earlier, except for five communities that had it uh under special act. But thank you, I'd be um excellent comments, appreciate it.
Yeah, and also uh on this issue of the uh four year terms, uh, we did have uh, one of our meetings was largely dedicated to that, and we had guests from other communities that uh are have recently or are currently reviewing the same comment. And uh Attorney Medic, you want to respond to that, to elaborate for me on that?
On the four year terms?
Now, the fact that we had this group of individuals.
One of the things, yeah, one of the things, yeah.
Educate us, yeah.
We we had a number of officials here, and I've done these programs throughout the state of Connecticut where we kind of analyzed um, the structure of creating four year terms uh and offsets within it. And um, I I understand your position regarding um the inability of of the voters to um uh to uh recall a mayor if they're in for a four year term. Uh, but a lot of communities um adopt um a a slightly different structure instead of giving four year terms to both the mayor and the council, they keep the council on a two year cycle. And the idea of the two year cycle is it allows voters to make decisions in the off cycle uh that could really uh hamper or or put a constraint on a mayor if they feel a mayor is out of order, the mayor's out of line, the mayor's not being responsive to the public. Um, the public has an opportunity to send back a council uh in the middle of the mayor's term that would be um more antagonistic, more uh engage in more oversight uh for the mayor, and that's the concept of trying to keep the terms um uh to break the the council away from the mayoral cycle. Um, and and so there's a number of communities that do have a four year term for mayor and a two year term for uh council largely on that on that uh philosophy. On that theory.
And and to respond to a couple of other things that you mentioned, uh, public relations, we are planning uh when we have our suggestions to really get out to the community and to educate and reach out as much as we possibly can so that any revision uh will be successful after all our hard work. We don't want to uh see this not uh not happen. And and to that end, again, um, we were charged mostly with uh restructuring the document. And so we've been saying throughout this that we're reforming the document, we're not, we're not reforming the government, the governance. So we're trying to keep major issues to uh a small amount of items so that we can get this at least over over the hump and get it changed. And then again, to the idea of having another uh a uh required under the charter, another uh revision in two to three years, and then on a regular every five year review in the charter. So we're trying to deal with that issue to to get us uh to a point where we have a new charter. So um, where are we now? We are here.
She has another minute, I think.
Oh, Diane.
Oh, yeah, so thank you so much for that. So I I would just say thank you again for the explanation, um Attorney Mednick, and I will get this over to you. And of course, you are correct, the um, the new Canaan case was set to the mill rate, but the reference was to the issue of um of home rule um exclusive of the provision of the general statutes, and that's the wording that was in there. But I'll shoot it over to you, it's a short document, but it's interesting reading.
I'd love to see, I know the case very well, uh, that's why I was surprised that was that you, yeah, I I know the case very, very well, thank you.
And um, and for Chairwoman Bresch as well, I just think, um, I guess my sentiment is I would hate to see all the good work that is being done in terms of the structure, the cleanup, uh, the readability, the understandability. I would just hate to see all of that go to waste um because of one or two um controversial items um that are likely to be in here that you're already aware of, that we're already speaking about. And so I I do hope that it's something that will be separated out so that we're not um, you know, throwing out the whole kit and caboodle here um for the sake of, you know, a couple of items that people are um, you know, more concerned with. And in terms of the um, the public outreach, I would say if there's anything coming up that would be a mailing to the community, which probably isn't, I think that ship has sailed in terms of tax bills. Um, that that would have been a good opportunity to make sure something got in every home, but I'm sure there's other ways to do that, including mailing so that people are at least aware. Thank you so much.
And and also on the P R, we have reached out to uh uh appropriate um uh, can't think of the right word. Um, places to get the message out, and it has not been that successful. And some people are carrying the information and and other um entities are not. So we are, we're concerned about that ourselves and, but we have been trying. So I want you to understand that we are aware of it, of the need to do so. And um, that was why we're having this meeting tonight in order to get more attention and get more people involved with us to help us.
Okay, thank you very much, and it, uh, there's an opportunity to come out into the neighborhoods as well, I'd just say on behalf of our own association. Um, we have a lot on our plate right now, and I know our maybe uh meeting is booked because of zoning regulations, but perhaps in the um, in the summer, we can arrange something or have a special meeting and uh would love to host you. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so here.
Can I point out two things to follow up on that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, one is that there will be a formal public hearing about a month from now on the actual proposed revised charter. So everybody will have an opportunity to see the document. I hope to have the whole document consolidated in the next few two or two weeks or so. Um, it will then be published before uh the uh public hearing. And then the commission will make its final decisions on presenting the document to the council after that point. Um, the council also has a required statutory hearing uh during the time that they formulate their response to the commission. So you have those different opportunities for a public involvement in this process. And um, and and uh, so I think you should understand that. And then finally, from a statutory perspective, the municipality has the option um through, uh, I believe it'll be Rick McQuade's office, through the town clerk's office, to publish an explanatory text. Um, and uh, that is um uh, not an advocacy document, so it won't say we think the four year term is a wonderful thing because it's a wonderful thing. It will simply say that the four year term is in the charter. Or it will say, uh, you know, what we're doing with the budget, but it won't be advocate. It'll be strictly explanatory. I write them for city and town clerks throughout the state is really to go chapter by chapter and delineate the changes so the public can see what's in it, because no matter how many questions you have, you're not going to be able to accommodate all the things that are in a charter revision uh in three or four or even seven questions.
Okay, so uh, anyone else here, you're in present that?
John.
John. You would like to speak again?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, sure.
And also, if you touch your screen, tap your screen and your Q and A, Diane, there's a few more questions on your Q and A. If you just punch your screen anywhere.
Okay.
I think her questions are things we probably have to discuss, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, let's let's leave with Mr. Levin first.
All right, go ahead, John.
Thank you, John Levin, um, again, same address as fifteen minutes ago. Um, a a few more quick questions for Attorney Mednick. Um, I'm wondering which Connecticut towns, if any, have term limits presumably enabled uh by special acts? Uh, that's number one, two, two and a half more questions. Um, when uh, to the best of your knowledge, when did the Connecticut Legislature last pass a special act to accommodate an individual town charter revision?
I have, yeah, I'm sorry.
Seven, right?
No, 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 no. I, let me, let me deal with those two, John and the, or Levin, and then then you can ask your third question.
Okay.
With regard to when have they last adopted? I'm sure somewhere there's a charter revision special act that has been adopted in the modern era. Uh, I I didn't mean to say that they are not, I I simply meant to say they're not favored. But let me tell you what they do do in the legislature. Um, and I've been involved in these things, and I'm I'm not proud of them. But what happens is they, uh, under the, under the guise of general legislation, they adopt legislation that affects towns between the population of sixty thousand and sixty five thousand um and do something this way. Well, it usually means one or two towns, the town that's promoting it, and another town may fall into it. That's the way the legislature grants special favors in legislation to address it. Um, two examples I've seen, um, there, and God willing, this will not happen in our charter revision. There was a Charter Revision Commission that missed their deadline. And the legislature, thank God, was still in session, they were able to accommodate that by ad- adopting legislation that allowed towns between sixty thousand and sixty thousand of the population to extend their deadline by ten days or whatever, whatever it may be. That's the way they deal with it in the modern era. Um, the second question was the towns with term limits. Um, at the top of my head, there are two towns that I'm aware of with term limits. One of them is Bristol. Bristol adopted their term limits in two thousand sixteen, I believe, or seventeen by by charter revision. Um, I got involved in it, and I'll tell you the story just a little bit, if I may, Madam Chair, I I think it will be helpful to Mr. Levin. Um, uh, I had a panel for one of my charter commissions, and I had the mayor of Stratford that has recall and the mayor of Bristol that had term limits. And um, I had them on the screen like we're watching, uh, you know, like I'm watching from here. Um, and I said, uh, it's wonderful to have these um uh, these great examples of how Connecticut law works or doesn't work um on my screen. The the mayor of Stratford has a recall that is legal because it was granted by special act. The mayor of Bristol has a term limit that's not legal because it was adopted by referendum. And I actually went into Bristol and wrote an opinion in the Corporation Council and the mayor um, all supported it, and the Charter Commission um made a movement to take it out of the charter. Then the people went nuts, uh, it became a very big political question. They ended up withdrawing and backing off, and the mayor ended up losing. So there were term limits in Bristol because she she took an unpopular position, and they still have it in their charter. I guarantee you, as much as I can guarantee anything in the law, that if somebody were to challenge the term limit provision in Bristol, they would lose. The Bristol uh term limit would not survive a legal challenge. The other town that I know has term limits is Wilton. Um, and Wilton recognizes that they were not legal. And when I talked to the chair of the commission, who is a lawyer in Hartford, I happened to know, I called them up because the corporate, when I, when I spoke to the corp counsel and the first select woman, they said, yeah, we know we've got it. Uh, we'll have to figure out what to do about it, but we know that it's not enforceable. I talked to the chair of the commission, who's a terrific lawyer, uh, but not a home rule lawyer, because the 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 framework is a little different. And I said, so what were you thinking? And he said, oh, there was nothing that prohibited, the governor's position, the C C indicated that was the governor's position uh on 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 the issue of uh term limits. And that was the wrong answer, and they didn't have uh, their town attorney wasn't called into it, and they just, it just passed uh because it's a popular thing, as you could see. Almost every, and you may remember this, and Mrs. C C might have said this at the beginning when she testified at the beginning of the process, the two things that you always hear at charter revisions, term limits and um and recall um, always comes up, I always have to give the same spiel uh throughout the charter process. Um, but I'll be happy to look, but the, I'm not sure, I don't know if there are any um, cities in the state that have a express grant uh um, special act term limit. I don't know if any town does exist in that nature. Um, I do know two towns that that have them, and I don't think they're they're legally viable.
And what's your half question?
Sorry.
Oh, actually, there's a third question and a half question.
Oh, all right.
Uh, okay. Um, you know, uh, it's an interesting discussion so far. Um, I'm wondering, does anything prevent Norwalk uh in its charter from having um effectively a springing provision uh that becomes effective only when when enabled by a special act? So you've already referenced uh term limits in Bristol and Wilton, which are not uh permitted under state law, but would presumably, if through a special act, would immediately become effective in those uh, in those towns. So my question is, um, can the charter include um springing provisions like that that uh could be enabled through special acts in the future?
I've never recommended some something of that nature. I have recommended it only where there is something in the charter that is currently prohibited. Uh, give you a good example. Um, right now, your police commission serves as a traffic authority. A number of communities would like to see um uh, would like to see uh that change if the state law changes. In fact, there's something in the legislature going on right now uh that will allow that law to change. If the charter mentions that the police commission as the traffic authority, I will usually put a springing provision in, in the event the law changes. The legislative body is free to adopt an ordinance creating a separate freestanding traffic authority. I've never recommended legislation uh putting something in the charter that is um, so aspirational that is that aspirational in the sense that um the the law doesn't exist, there's no there's no current history in the state, because I'm telling you, from the time I did my first major charter revision in the early nineteen nineties in um New Britain to today, this issue has come up in every charter revision. These two issues have come up with every charter revision, and there's never been a serious effort in the legislature to give local government the authority to do it. Um, and um, you know, someday, when I come to New, when I come to Norwalk next time, and I'll see you, I'll tell you some great stories about Bristol. Um, which I don't want, I don't want to dwell on this evening.
We we love stories. Um, the the last part is really the half question is a request uh for just some information or discussion. Uh, and it really speaks to my own ignorance. And really speaks to my own ignorance. You mentioned town referenda. I'm wondering, does Norwalk permit referendum, referenda and? Is there, what is permitted by the state and have there been special acts to enable referenda?
You have in your charter, and it's been in the charter probably since nineteen thirteen. A provision for referenda. It's all your ordinances can be challenged by referenda. Your budget can be challenged by referenda, but I'll defer to. The city fathers and mothers on this commission to let you know whether that has ever been exercised. They are, they're in. In your current charter, you'll see them. We moved it into article, I think it's in. It might be in the legislative, in the city council section, yeah. We, we moved it into the city council section because it really is a. I've put the parenthesis in that it's a petition for overrule. I prefer to call it. A petition for overrule as opposed to a referendum because it's a petition signed by the voters in the community. And this is granted to you by special act. That, that signed by the voters in the community to challenge the ordinance or to challenge the budget provision. And that's why in this reorganization, I moved it there so everybody can see it exists. And that's common. Hampden has it. Other communities have it. But like, like Norwalk, I don't think Hampden voters have ever exercised. Their rights under the petition for overrule, but you have that authority in your charter right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll do, I'll do homework.
Larry, is there anyone else? I know, but I wanted to go, if there's somebody online, Lisa, now we'll come back to you, okay? I just want to make sure we get everybody.
Diane Lauricella has her hands up.
Okay, and, and then, then Lisa. Okay, Diane? Diane?
Thank you. You can hear me now. Yeah, sorry about the yellow light. I don't, I need a lighting director.
What's the question?
Okay, well, I had two questions during my rapid. Initial testimony and then I, because you have allowed and I'm, and. I do appreciate it. So there's a real discussion. I have some quick additional. Items. Very quick, but my two questions had to do with, during my initial testimony, had to do with. Actual additions or changes to the. Boards and commissions. I believe that's through ordinance, but I wasn't sure and I should know this, but I, I'm. Not my, not my. Full-time job. And then the other was in your section, I think it's twelve, I'm sorry, the section about. Diversity, whether, oh, two dash six, diversity on boards, commissions, et cetera. Can there be in this document? Should there be some kind of mention or mandate of training, diversity training? Does that handle through ordinance or policy? Again. So, so could I come back after those two questions are answered?
Well, we'll see, but let's try to answer them, Steve.
Yeah, you can do that. I mean, the, the concept, the, the, and you talked about this earlier, I believe. Those concepts can be addressed. We try to establish a constitutional standard. We're, we're trying to the best extent we can in this charter revision to peer down things as much as we can. But as the chair has indicated, we're reforming the document and not the government. My general view on things, I think corresponds with yours, Ms. Lauricella. And Lauricella, am I correct?
I answer to anything.
Lauricella, okay, and I'll have some limoncello when I talk to Ms. Lauren. But I don't drink during charter meetings. Record, the, the. My, my natural. Inclination is to really try to narrow things down and create the constitutional standards in the charter. That's why we put so much in the front on public involvement. Public access oversight, you know, public open meetings, public records. These are all state laws, you know, they're, they're all. Basically regurgitating the laws of the state of Connecticut. But I just think it's important in a charter to lay that out very clearly. If you want to put into the charter in that section. You know, we, compliance and cooperation, we could also have, you know, education and training regarding these, these, these ideas. And it's a very broad diversity requirement. It really talks about not just this, the. Protected class diversity, which we know about, or political diversity, which some people have raised. And I do believe that the MPR statute does apply to your boards and commissions. It doesn't apply to your council because. There's an exemption under the MPR if you have a district system, even if it's combined with an at-large system. That you do not have to have MPR. And so, so you will see these sections, we're going to touch on them a little bit tonight. On the, the board and commission section in the charter. In the department section of the charter, you're going to see an awful lot of verbiage. The commission hasn't seen this yet either, so I'm giving everybody a preview of this on how you create a department. How do you build a border commission? Because the preference I have, except for a few exceptions, when we get to that section probably in a week or so, the next meeting. You'll see what I'm recommending is that there are three or four commissions, five commissions. That really should be built in a charter, like an ethics board. You don't want to leave it to political officials. To adopt an ethics board by ordinance or to be able to eliminate an ethics board by ordinance. In some communities like Waterbury, we put an audit commission in their charter. And we, we, we guaranteed that you could never reduce the budget of the audit commission below the most recent. Budget for an audit commission because you don't want mayors and councils eliminating an audit function. In a community where that is an important thing to have. And so, so you'll see an awful lot on public participation. An awful lot on how you build a border commission and how you build a department. And my hope would be, as the chair has talked about, i- if they do a charter revision in two years or three years. That they will look at those issues to figure out. Are there ways we need to thin down the mandates in our charter? Not the, not the functions. So, you know, the charter should lay out all the functions that all the departments should be providing. How the, the departments are organized should be done in real time. Under constitutional rules that you have in your charter to allow a mayor and a council and, and, and I guess the board of estimate in Norwalk. To make those kinds of substantive decisions in real time and be really responsive to the voters. I mean, you have. In your charter, a welfare department. There's not a city in the state that has had a welfare department since welfare was eliminated in the eighties or nineties. And it's in your charter. You can't get rid of it unless you get rid of it in the charter. And so my, you know, so that's, that's the direction this new charter is going to take. It's not going to eliminate. Many, it's going to, and it's going to say this. They're going to say that there are charter commission, there are commissions that should be established by ordinance. So there are, you know, two different categories, those that are established in the charter. Those that are so important that the charter mandates their creation, but it's up to the council and the mayor to create them in real time. In the field. Then the last category is what, what commissions and boards do you want to establish? That aren't mentioned in the charter, that are not, and, and they may be boards of commissions that are, I don't want to use the word trendy in a. Pejorative sense, but they may be things we're just learning about. And so you may need to create something that people in twenty, twenty, twenty twelve didn't know about. Dealing with a lot of the changes in the world we're living in. So that's a little bit of the philosophy. I hope that answered your question.
May I just clarify why I asked it? The reason is that for the thirty-five, almost forty years I've lived in Norwalk. I've been advocating for environmental management in a holistic way. And even with the changes, in my opinion, both professionally as an environmental consultant, as well as an advocate and an activist. The city is still not looking at environmental management and energy management in a holistic way. And it's not a trendy thing. We are faced with it. So I will take a look at under the two sections, the board and commissions and the departments. But we are not handling it, even with the changes of adding a layer of chiefs in a holistic way. We are still doing, in my professional opinion, and I would love to briefly speak to this. Ms. Bresch, maybe I'll write you a proposal. I wish, I wish to clarify. I don't have a master's in public administration, but I have experience and training as a former president of the League of Women Voters. But also a longtime board member of various environmental advocacy groups. Statewide as well as local. We need to address this and make it stick so that it doesn't matter who is elected. Because that, their flavor may change as to whether they think it's important to, to handle. Energy matters in at least the, the local, the public buildings. And in addition, what happens when there is pollution? And right now we have numerous different departments that are, and commissions that are handling it and it's not. It's not as seamless as it could be and should be. And so that is why.
Can you please, please do that, you know?
I will.
I, I think, I think that'd be great. And I want to point out one of my other communities. We're dealing, we're on the edges of the issue that you've just raised because health is part of that as well.
Absolutely.
You know, and, and a lot of health commissions in the state are built on the old notion that you have to have a couple of doctors on the, on the health. And that's fine, but that's not the end of health with the Environmental Justice Act, all those things.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's the reason.
I appreciate, as we're drafting, I would appreciate anything you have to say.
Okay. Thank you, because I brought that E J issue up to the Board of Health, which is very limited.
I want to, Diana, I think you've covered it well and we are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Lisa, you wanted?
Yeah, I just want to clarify with Attorney Mednick, what were the other, who were the other four towns that had recall?
Oh, God, you finally stumped me. I know Stratford is one of them. New Haven has a limited recall. For the Port of Alderman, I think, which I served on and, and I survived ten years without being recalled. I can't tell you. The other two, it's, if, if you look at Simons versus Canty, the Supreme Court case. You'll, you'll see them. They're all, they're listed there, but I don't recall the others off the top of my head. Yeah, Simons versus C A N T Y, Canty. If you look it up, you'll find it. You'll, you'll, you'll see my name in there too. I was a young lawyer who argued the case. Back, back in the nineteen eighties, but I can't remember the other three communities. I apologize.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask our commissioners if any of you would like to make a comment or question or. You want to start with you, Tyler?
No, I, I don't know that I have any comment expressed in. I think it's helpful to hear from everybody. I, I hope over the next couple of weeks, we're for more people. I guess my only comment on the four-year mayor term, because we discussed that. I was kind of, I spent some time thinking about it. I was originally kind of agnostic as to whether the council should also have a four-year term. And I ultimately settled on. A two-year term because I like it in that it's kind of like midterm elections, right? So if you have. You know, I think if a criticism is that. Recent years, right, in my ten years in Norwalk, you've had primarily Democrats in the council and in the mayor's office. So the criticism has been often that they're all working together. It's all one big cooked up thing, right? So if you have a four-year mayor and a four-year council and they're all the same party. And they're all working together, whether they look perceived, and you have an ability to recall and you have no ability for term limits. That's four years where if you don't like how things are going, you're stuck. Right? Whereas if you had a two-year council. To me, that's more of a check on the, the mayor's power because you now have the ability to put people in there who will work against him or her. If you don't like the way things are going, I mean, I, I still could be convinced otherwise, but that was my thought and I, I still do. Feel that's the right approach if. Four-year mayor is accepted, right? I mean, is it something that we would obviously pull out? Because we don't want, if that's going to be something that people are concerned with, we don't want to have that tank the rest of the work we've been doing. So. That was my thought on that particular issue, but otherwise it's, you know, it's helpful to hear.
Mr. McQuaid?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think Tyler and I have had this conversation. We've, I've spoken, I do on the four-year term. But I also want to point out is that we're going to have. Public hearings on this, so there are items that we hear from the public that. Are big number items or things that can't be, will bog down all the work that we've done up to this point. That they will remove, be removed and it won't be one of the items that are included in the document. When we're finished, because our charge was to. Clean it up, get it organized and, and get it presentable for twenty twenty-three.
I, I think it's really worth it because I went back and reread the original one the other day and it is so.
Yeah, I mean, the torpedo thing the other day, really.
So I think if there's anything, I mean, if there's anything we have to pull out, we can.
Absolutely.
If there's anything that's just causes such a stir, I can address it then and there because it would be a shame to have a existing charter.
And as we've read through it, we, we've seen things that just. It's mind-boggling that they're even in there and people haven't brought up before, but. I, I commend the, the commission. And the members of the commission because, you know, this has been something that's been going on since. First week of September in that way. And Attorney Mednick has guided us through something that has been tried many times before that I've been around. And it just falls flat on its face. So I, I think we're going to have a document. A working document when we're completed. It may not have everything that everybody's looking for, but if we put in the place that there are. It will be reviewed again and that we will do this every five years. I can tell you right now, I will be.
I'm sure I will.
And I will tell Mr. Levin, we will meet our deadline. There's no doubt in my mind about meeting our deadline.
All right.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, one, one other thing, and I, I thought it was, it was kind of helpful. We're instructed rather. The woman who was from Hampden when we had.
Yes, on the panel that we mentioned.
They had a similar situation to, to Norwalk, which was that they had attempted a charter revision about ten years ago. The four-year mayor term was controversial. It didn't pass. They just redid theirs recently and it went through without much controversy. And, and we asked, you know, what was different? Why, why was that such a? You know, heartfelt as well at ten years ago. And I, I believe her answer was just they did better outreach this time around. So I think we should be. Conscious of that moving forward and do everything we can to. You know, kind of pull out the important things and explain why. We as a group decided it was the way to go, whether it's best practices, whether it's hearing from other towns, whether it's internal discussions. And be sure that people understand why the suggestions have been made and. Hopefully take away some of the. Concerns if, if that's, if that's.
Our lack of understanding, yeah.
Great, Benita?
I guess. My concern is the same as Tyler's in terms of just getting it out to the public. We really need to, to figure out how to get this document, how to get the work that we're doing. In front of more people. I was surprised that there were so few people here. Tonight. And I just think that. We really have to have some kind of an avenue and I don't know quite how to do that, but to. To get it out, whether it's the hour, whether it's. Robo calls or I don't know what, whether we, I don't think we have a budget. But, you know, there's got to be some kind of way to get people more engaged.
Well, I would just dovetail into that. First of all, thanks to those who did come. But you're vitally important to this because the folks that have been here talk to a lot of different people. In your own groups and organizations. I would ask, you know, I sent a thing to the district. D, I sent a thing to be passed along to the whole, the entire R T C. I don't know if it got around or not. A lot of the points that Tyler so excellently. Uh, a lot of the points that Tyler so excellently wrote. But we really need your help in talking to those that you talk to. And have influence over to get involved in these public meetings and come. Because tonight was very, I I, to me, it was a vindication of all the long hours that we put in. You hit on a lot of the things we've talked about. Uh, and I mean, it's. It's good that what we were talking about was also what was in your thoughts that you came. And we're just, it's timely because we're just getting ready to go into. The boards and commissions part of the charter, so all of these comments are very well taken.
Okay, and then our our two um commissioners that are, um, Noam, Angela.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think Khan and Tyler said exactly what I was going to say as well, as Rick as well, which is just, first of all, thank you so much. Um, you know, those of you who participated today, I thought the engagement was really, I mean, high quality. I mean, folks spend time going through these documents, which are not easy, um, so I'm really grateful for that. But yeah, the challenge is on us really to to get the word out and to really ensure that before the next hearing. Folks know exactly what we're doing and understand it in a way um that makes sense to them. So, you know, for me, it's really just a thank you. To those who attended, and then on us, let's figure out, we have to, we have to crack this nut um of getting information out there in 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 a way that makes sense.
Michael.
I um, I would like to say, you know, thank you to everyone that's participated on Zoom and in the audience. And um, I I think I have to agree with the sort of like Rick and um Tyler and Benita and pretty much everyone. All the work that we have done, I think we need to try to avoid, I guess, issues or matters that um. I guess people would consider like controversial, I think. Maybe the term of office or anything like zoning, those are just, you know, two that came to mind. That maybe another commission may have to deal with those. At this, because we are trying to like finish up all the work that we have started. So it would benefit, you know, the city.
Anything else, anybody? That's okay, yeah. Uh, I've been talking. I think I've talked enough. Um, other than to uh reaffirm that it's our intention. To create a list of of concerns and of interests that people have that we cannot or have not addressed. To pass along with our reports, so that we're not going to forget the comments that have been made. But these are issues that the public and and our residents are interested in. So that's part of what we're doing also. Um, so we really do appreciate um your coming and and um. If you can stimulate any of our media, the local media, to pay attention to what we're doing, that would be very helpful. So. I think we'll move on from the public comment period, and we'll move on to the review of um. The revisions for Article Four and Five.
If we.
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'll be ready. Um. Has everybody gone over? I sent out also to everybody uh, the markups on. Articles one to three, uh, one, one to three, four, six, and nine. And I also sent out the markup on Article Ten on the budget. Everybody okay with what I sent out in that regard?
Um, I haven't had a chance.
We just got it tonight, Steve.
We just got it.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
I got.
Well, you had, you had mailed it, but we we thought there was a package, it was going to be printed in.
Oh, I apologize.
And there wasn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not here.
I'll talk to Zoom in the future about that. Um, also, I want you to think about this, um, two things, because we are. Um, we are pushing the calendar at this point. I wanted you to see before we start, because I don't want to run out of time, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. Um, next week, um, I am clear on Wednesday and Thursday of next week, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And I wanted to see if we could book one of those nights. Um, for the commission, because um, I want to be able to present this, the departments and. The boards and commissions. And I'm hoping for that meeting to be able to give you the entire document. As we need to start looking at, I I don't want to wait on me, I was originally going to wait until the third, but I would rather. Get the document to you in one piece um. Uh, for uh, next Wednesday or Thursday, so before we go any further, if we could. Come to a consensus or agreement on trying to meet one or both of those nights, frankly. Um, please be my guest, I I.
All right, well, let's take a poll. Let's start with you.
Yeah, I'm okay.
You're okay.
I'm gonna, I'm out of town all next week.
Okay.
I changed my vote, I'm with Benito all next week.
I'm not available on uh Wednesday. Available on Thursday.
Uh, when, no, I have, I have baseball on Tuesdays.
Yeah, coach.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So Wednesdays are no good.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about Thursday?
Any additional Wednesdays on the ones I already have.
Thursday, Thursday is okay.
Thursday, the twenty-seven?
Yes.
Right. I I cannot do that either.
Okay, so Angela.
I can do the twenty-seventh, just not the twenty-sixth.
Okay, and Michael.
I could do the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
Okay. Well, um, so it looks like the majority of us can do it on Thursday the twenty-seventh.
That's great.
So we'll just be missing.
We just won't take any final actions, but at least we could plow through.
Not available?
When?
Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay, so is it just Tyler that's not available and me? Oh, yeah, and yours too. So we would have a quorum if everybody participates, so.
Okay, good, so we'll do Thursday. And then I want to tell you that the following.
Six thirty.
Let's do six thirty.
And I I don't know if the council chamber is available, so we'll have to check on that, and if not, we'll have to ask for another room.
All right. Um, and then the following week on the third, I I'm want to ask you, uh, one of my commissions really uh. Did me a disservice and they scheduled a meeting. Um, on the night that you've had a long scheduled meeting on May third, they have a tight deadline. Um, their charter is due on the fifteenth of May, so we really do need to meet. I wanted to see if we could start our meeting on the third at seven thirty, if that's okay with everybody. As opposed to six thirty. I told my other commission, we have to get our work done in an hour, which we should be able to do.
Let's start with you, Angela.
I can, I can make that, that's actually works better.
Michael.
Seven thirty is okay on the May third.
Okay. And Tyler?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Okay.
I can do seven thirty.
Good.
Charles?
Seven thirty on the third, yeah.
Okay, so everybody's okay for seven thirty on.
Thank you. I I very much, I appreciate your courtesy, yeah.
That's worth a twenty percent discount, right?
On what, my bill?
Yes.
Well, I do that. But I already, I already do something similar to that, so don't worry about it.
Okay. And then six thirty on the twenty-seventh, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, yes, six thirty on the twenty-seventh and seven thirty on the uh.
Third.
Third, all right, and my objective is to have, I hope to have for everybody. Um, a uh. The fully consolidated document, I hope for the twenty-seventh, we'll see, I'm I'm waiting for one section. That the Corp Counsel's Office is looking at, and that's, that's delayed me a little bit. And I apologize, uh, and on the mayor's section, I I will go over the mayor's section again. Uh, but I didn't make any changes, because we didn't really discuss it much, but let me pull up on the screen the council. Um. And uh, I think this is it. Do you see the council in front of you?
Yep.
Mm-hmm, good, I want to make sure the right document was there.
Make it a little bigger.
I'll make it bigger, yep, but you jumped ahead of me, I was gonna.
All right.
Do that.
And I make.
And and I apologize, uh, it's allergy season, so it's been, I've been straining myself. We'll try to get through this uh, in some, in some reasonable way. So at the beginning of this section, uh, this looks a little different because I um. Uh. Wanted to do, I I think the chair asked that we should really do some explanatory. Um, um, language here. And so what I tried to do in this section, which was originally just A, if you may recall, I'm sorry, there's uh. I'm having an internet email problem, like this thing keeps coming up on the screen, so I apologize. Um, I was trying to put it on one of my other screens, but it seems to come up on the screen that I'm working on. Um, so what I wanted to do here is not only deal with the general legislative grant of authority. But to also explain the repealed special act provisions. What do they mean? Why is, why, what is the, you know, why is that the case? And what is the meaning of that? And I thought that should be explained, and that's what I tried to do. In four dash one B is explain those repealed uh, special act provisions and um. Uh, and I think it does a pretty good job. Please take a look at it and let me know if you think that is correct or not. And then uh, the um, in C, it's just a marker. That says to you that there are powers that the common council has with regard to the taxing districts. And you will find those powers in the section on the taxing districts. So it just simply uh, um, it simply uh articulates that. It makes it clear to people that there is a a a an entire section of the charter dealing exclusively with taxing districts. So I hope, uh, Madam Chair, that that um. Um, you know, we could look at the language and, you know, if we need to clean it up, we can clean it up. But that was the intent of that section, which I thought was articulated by uh, by you all when we got together on Saturday. Any comment?
Well.
All right.
Hmm.
Um, there are no other sec changes here. Um, the uh. I think uh. The executive session question, uh, frankly, um, I wasn't sure whether we had decided. Let me take a look at my notes on the side, I'm with the enlargement, I can't see them on the screen. Oh. Uh, did, I think we decided on Saturday that you guys wanted to repeal the executive session language. Am I correct on that? I couldn't, my notes.
Yeah. Yes.
So I will, I will delete that. The um. The section here is, uh, I changed the uh title from general grant of authority, because we kind of use that term. Above and call it the source of legislative authority. Um, and what that does is, uh, you heard me say it many times tonight, that really um lays out. Um, what home rule is in Connecticut, and I've never done this in a charter before, I have to tell you. Where I've actually said they have the authority, and and what this says is to do things that are um fairly uh. Uh, necessarily or or fairly implied in or incident to powers that are expressly granted by the state. Uh. That should be the word, but not.
Yeah, you, yeah, you didn't fix that.
I don't like fix that word. Um.
You did, I thought fix.
No, you you caught it, and I thought I, I thought I caught it and fixed it.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, okay, I'll fix it again. I thought I got it in the last one, but I guess I didn't. I'll fix that. Um, and uh, that uh. Uh, are essential to the declared objects and purposes of the city, not simply convenient but indispensable. That is a statement of the rule, the the law of home rule, basically. And this is the first charter I've actually ever put that in, and I think it's a good. Addition to a charter so that everybody can understand it and see it right in front of you. A corporation council, a legislator, a mayor, anybody can explain that and what that means. And that's a pretty, you know, that is the, that is the grant of authority for legislative bodies uh, to enact legislation. Um. Two and three, nothing changed there. I have references to the sections that deal with departments and divisions. Um, I merged planning and zoning, there's no separate zoning commission. So I took that out, made that reference appropriate. In that section, um, I took out this old reference, I think somebody. Raised that, it really doesn't apply, I'm sorry about this thing, I apologize, there's nothing I can do about it right now, my. Computer guy will be coming tomorrow. Um, I did add a whole section, you'll see here. On, because, because the charter addresses. Reorganization in this section, um. Subsection C three, let me go back up for a second, subsection three. Deals with merger, consolidation, elimination, creation. I thought it was important to move this language in that you would have seen in the um. Department section of, it was, I I drafted it in the department section, which you haven't seen yet. But as we, I was going through this the other day, I said, why have this in two different places? And so I moved the standards for reorganization into the legislative section, even though it says the mayor. Initiates the departmental reorganization, uh, it's ultimately a council vote um that um, that um allows for it. And in this, in this language, it talks about. How you alter uh, uh, um, uh, how you uh authorize it. You can change them, and it talks about the limitation of reorganization plan. You need an opinion from the corporation council. If you're going to eliminate. A department that is in the charter, that is created in the charter. And you're going to eliminate it, merge it with another entity, which you can do. The corporation council needs to be able to opine that the functions of that department. And the functions that are stated in the charter for that department are, in fact, included in the reorganized, reorganized entity. That's basically what that language is all about. And um. I have, I still have this green language here, because I still have some questions about. Um, these council appointments uh, that I don't have final answers on, I promise to have those by the next time I turn this around. Um, now here's something I threw in, and I could take it out. But we talked about this a lot the other day. And I don't know whether it will be controversial, just even raising it. But remember, we we've kind of been staying in the direction of. Uh, the six hundred dollars and staying there, uh, and remember, the issue came up, can the council do this? Can they get an increase anyhow? And the answer is they can. Um, are we inviting controversy by simply stating that the general statute say? That you can increase coun- council compensation, but it is subject to a referendum at the next regular election. That's the law. Um. Are we flirting with disaster? If it, if it's, if if it is a difficult political issue by just stating the law in the charter? So I I just wanted to ask you that question. I put it in there for informational, I'm not endorsing it.
All right, Rick wants to say.
Yeah, you know. I I think you're correct on that. I think it's it's an item that. Um. It 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 becomes political if it's not really laid out. Exactly what would be increased, what would, how we go about doing it and things like that, so. I I think it, we're at the point that we are doing the reorganization. And and going forward with this, I don't want to see it get bogged down by something like this item. And I just.
I just want to.
Time in another place.
And I don't, I don't agree with you, I just wanted to give you that option, that's all.
Okay, well, don't go on, because there's more discussion, so Benita.
Well, I mean. How does the public feel about it? I mean, somebody did bring that up tonight, se- several people have brought it, not tonight, but in over the course of months. Brought it up tonight and um. And seemed in favor.
Mm-hmm.
Of. An increase, um. I guess I, for me, it's it's wanting to put something in that is the law. I don't want to put anything in, it's going to wreck this getting passed, but if it is the law. What's the issue with putting it in? I'm not sure I understand that.
Well, my opinion also is that I think it's it's an item that is going, if it was to go forward. It would be in, you know, we'd have to go with the vote and everything on this charter uh, change. Or updated the charter in this upcoming election, and I just feel. Uh. The polit, you know, the wise out politic person in me is saying that we shouldn't probably have. Increases for council people or or plans for increasing council people in the same year that is a city election. I think that we should make this something that would show up in a off-year.
Oh.
Politically, I just think it's, it's just not the right thing to do.
At this time.
At this time, I'm not saying down the road it's not the right thing to do. I just think in this election, being a city election, we shouldn't have items like this on the uh. Questions, because I think it would, it could easily shoot it down.
All right, I can. Tyler, yeah, yeah.
Did you talk to you?
I'm sorry.
Just. Is this something, however, that's in the. Is this something, however, that's in the old? It's not in the old charter?
No, no, no.
This is an explanation.
This was a, this was a discussion point. I put it in here. This is Steve Mednick putting in here as a discussion point. It's not in the current charter.
Is it something that? The people. In the common councils. Know or can. Research for themselves.
Well, I can tell you when we bring this over to the common council, whether this provision is in there or not. We know that there are members of the council who are going to be advocating for increases. If we don't put this in now. And they raise the question. Um, I'm going to be honest with them and give them all the alternatives to think about. Um, because ultimately, you know, they're the appointing authority. They're the ones that are going to have to live or die. They're the ones who are going to write the questions, who have to make the political judgments. About what kind of questions to ask. So even if we take it out and they raise it. I will tell them this is the law. And uh, they can put it in the charter, which is simply a recitation of the law. Keep it out of the charter, no matter what you do, whether it's in the charter or not the charter, this is the law in the state of Connecticut. I just um. Didn't know whether this was. An olive branch or whether it was a political. Inviting political um. Um. You know, a not, not a good political result. That, that's. You know, but I, I really questioned myself when I put it in, but I just thought I owed it to you to at least raise it.
I uh, I think it's very helpful. I think it shows that we have heard uh. The input uh on the issue. Uh, and that we understand and, and we explain how things can change. And this might be one of the suggested items that we put on our list of things to be. Considered in a future uh charter revision. But to not have any comment, uh, I think will be a ve- very negative. Um, uh, reaction from the council. They need to. Uh, appreciate the fact that we've really thought about this and, and know that it's an issue that needs to be resolved. Sometime, not necessarily in this charter, but. In the future.
I, I was gonna say something similar. I'm inclined to agree with Rick. Um, I, I. Believe that the council should be paid more. I think it would encourage more people to get involved and it would help cover. Childcare costs or constituent outreach costs for people, which would be. Great, but I, I also agree and I, I think, uh, I was thinking about this today, actually, before I came here and it's, uh, you know. Unfortunately, that we have to think about this kind of stuff, right? I mean, we, we, we have seen a. Suggestion that the Board of Ed. Do quarterly multi-year contact with. Contract reporting. Framed as a takeover of the city takeover of the Board of Education um in some commentary that's happened online, right? So it's just. Tiny thing that has blown up. And I think if you have. Something even as, as benign as this combined with an extension of the mayor's term, it. It'd be going to freak out. And I think we do have to be conscious of how this is perceived. And I think there are a lot of things that. I would love to see in this particular vision that um. Probably are not going to make it for me. So that, you know, we don't have enough time or it's something that's going to be too sensitive that. Uh, it could potentially compromise the whole thing. So I think um. To the extent that we can, I would love to be able to explain. I, I don't know, in a memo or with a delivery document, we transmit this thing that. Um, there are recommendations that we would like to see within the next like two years, yet absolute worst case scenario. I would love to see the five year. Mandate, but if there's um, I, there's nothing that, uh, and I mean, Stephen mentioned this, there's nothing to convince the council from. They can look at it next year. They can look at it a year after that. Um, so I think if we can take things like this and, and. You know, convey that we, we thought about them and considered them and they're valid, but um, it's not going to happen this time around. I would be in support of that.
I'm not sure what you're saying. I, do you think this language is helping?
I do not think this is helpful to get this. Because I think this is.
Get what?
To get the chart, the charter at large. I think if something like this is in there, people are going to say. Look at the city council. They're trying to give themselves more money.
But Steve, if I heard you right, you're saying that council can do this themselves, right?
Yeah, you can do it in the budget process right now. No, the council can't do it themselves. Because remember, the council doesn't have any line item authority. The mayor and the, 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 the mayor can propose in the budget, a coun- a council compensation increase.
But they could in the next. Election, they, they could add something to the. Ballot that says you want to vote an increase for.
Only if it passes the budget. If, if, if it's in the budget. That section of the budget is subject to a referendum. Only that. So.
Well, my, my. My comment would be is that when you talk to them about this, you explain it to them clearly that they all understand how they could do this. And that it probably is not something that. Putting it in the charter would help them. And. So I agree with my colleagues that. This is just something. That we probably don't need to put in this charter at this time.
Gotcha.
But they can do it, but, but they have to tackle it. And it's not kicking the can down. I mean, they're the ones who are asking for it. We heard them. We heard some citizens say it. But. And, and. It will, I, it will not become a political issue on council, I don't think. But Rick's right that. As the.
At the polls.
At the word seeps through the community, it will be an issue at the polls and will, when I say will, the charter will be the loser.
Right. It will be.
And I need to correct, I misread this, so I totally do agree. I was. Looking at it as an explanation of how they, if they wanted to change it, this is how they could do it.
Right.
And so I, I agree with you.
Yeah, but see, that's how I saw it as well, because and, and beneath I get, I mean, I guess for me it was, are we just simply stating the law? And if so, what is the issue? What's the problem? But I, I hear you now and, and how I could see how this would be inter- misinterpreted.
Yeah.
I'm definitely not, yeah, looking to increase.
Um, yeah, I was gonna say, yes, we all know the council deserves. A raise, but uh, you're right. Putting this in there could. Hurt the chances of the um charter um changes being made, I think.
Yeah, and I just wanted you to see that and, and, and that was it. I was not trying to advocate anything. I just wanted.
Wow, that's fine.
I know. Oh, I understand.
Yep.
But, but I get the consensus of the commission is.
It'll come out. It won't be in, it won't be in the next draft.
No, no, no.
The, the word knit may be in the same, the knit, the word knit may be in the next draft, but this will not.
Okay, but what I'm saying, trying to say here is that this con- concept will be one of the items that we address uh. To be handled down the road.
I agree.
Yeah, okay.
We heard, just as long as we heard them. And we did.
Yeah, and we now recognize that it, it's an important issue that needs to be addressed. Okay.
I think that's the. Yeah, I think that's the last of the issues in this section. Um.
Right.
Because a good chunk of the rest of the section are things that are going away. The, this, by the way, is the referendum section. Uh, Mr. Levitt is still in the room. Um, we're, we're just going by it. Um, in section, yeah, four dash eleven, four dash eleven is the referendum procedure. It's right there.
Just to point out also that in case you don't know, the press is here. Nancy from Norwalk, Nancy on Norwalk is here. So just so everybody knows.
Well, I hope I didn't say anything to embarrass the commission in front of the press. Uh.
Well, nothing more than you normally do.
Okay, that's okay, man. All right. Thank you uh for letting me know that. I, I should have uh combed my hair. The uh.
I did.
Okay, I think that uh. I think that's it in this section. So uh. Now, the next section. I'll bring it up on the screen, but I didn't do a red line on it, but I'll go through and tell you. The changes I made. Um. Uh. Is the mayor's section. See if I can find it quickly here. The mayor's section is. Article five, okay. Apologize here. There's a lot of stuff.
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Um.
In unison.
And I, I, I'm not sure all the stuff we got. What order is it? I can't.
I can't.
I can't find anything either.
Yeah, well, you're going to have, hopefully it'll make it a little easier to have the full charter in front of you. Um, now, I don't have a red line on the mayor's section. That's why you didn't get it either. Uh, but I'll tell you what I did do and you'll see it and we will, we'll finalize it um at the next meeting. Um. The. I did add language. That you were looking for. One of the, one, oh, I'll make it larger. I'm sorry. I apologize. Um. Here we go. Um, I did have a, add language. You wanted language that showed that the mayor serves as an ex officio voting member. Of the Board of Estimate. And Taxation, Police Commission, Fire Commission. I think you wanted that in there.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I did, you'll see, you won't, you won't remember, but in section A and B, these are much thinner. If you recall, in the version of the document you had last week. Uh, there were very detailed sections talking about. The mayor's limitation on appointments after the election. We dealt with that in an earlier chapter, so I eliminated the language here. Um, and uh, you'll see in Articles one through three, slight changes because I tried to use. Some of the terminology that's in the current charter. So that it, it's not a new idea. It does show up as an idea that was in this section of the charter and right now it just simplifies his appointment authority. But it's limited uh as set forth earlier in the document. Um, I still have, I'm still looking at these changes. I took out of this section. There was some language regarding authority to appoint upon taking office, same issue. So I've eliminated that language and there's a reference to it in the, in chapter two, uh, Article two of the document. And also language regarding temporary vacancies, which um is uh, or the limitation on appointment authority. Which is um. In that section as well. Temporary vacancies, term of appointment and vacancies. Will be put into the department section. I just haven't uh moved it yet. And the other change. Of a substantive, uh, semi-substantive nature. Was here in the division chiefs. I eliminated the number of division chiefs. I think you wanted.
Yeah, it might change, right?
Yeah, it might change. And, and then under city clerk. Um. Uh, uh, remember, we had the, that date in November and now it simply says upon commencement of the term of office, the mayor shall appoint the city clerk. So there's no reference to a date. In that section. And that's it. It's this very short section. Uh, ironically, for the person who has all the power. The mayor's section is one of the shortest sections in the charter. And so that's the mayor. Um. And uh, you, you will see a red line. I'll make sure you get a red line on it to, to. Make sure that um, you got to hold me accountable and honest for the work that I'm doing here. Um. Uh, I'm going to take this, I'm going to take the screen off because we're, we're not going to do much more on. Um. On uh, departments and commissions tonight, but I'll just talk about them just briefly. Um, I kind of gave you a preview and we talked about it this evening with the members of the public. Um. The boards and commission section. And the department sections uh will be in your hands hopefully by the end of the week. Um. And that'll be the principal business that we will discuss next week when we get together. Um. The um. Yeah, I don't have the department's section here. I just have the uh. Boards and commissions, but in the boards and commission section, I think I told you this. Um. There are um. There's um. Only going to be four. Here, let me just see if I can pull it up quickly here. Hold on a second. Let me just pull it up on the screen. Um. It's Article seven. Do I have Article seven here? Let me get it up on the screen so you can at least see it. It'll be easier to go through that way. One second. Article seven. I think this is it. Hold on.
What was that? That made did when we first started.
Okay, I remember he asked me one. In the beginning. That's the first one.
I don't have it. I do not.
Give me one second here. I'm sorry.
I hate doing our voice and PDF format. Shame on.
You know, I have seen notes in none of mine.
Wait, in the beginning. Maybe after this meeting, I wasn't here. Ah, I was on Zoom. Ah.
Yeah.
You're not. Yeah. So while we're waiting, I have a question. Um. How, how are all the comments that we heard tonight recorded and, and, and available to us? How does that work?
Are they in our minutes? Who's doing our minutes?
The minutes are being taken and also the video will be.
Available.
Available um from our website.
Okay, because there is, you know, there's a lot of detail there for minutes and I want to make sure we don't. Lose any important uh comments.
Yeah, the minute takers is on and, and they'll be doing, I don't know how to turn around the minutes. But after the meeting completes.
Yeah.
The video is automatically uploaded to YouTube. It's being streamed live on YouTube. So as soon as the meeting ends. Anyone can go on YouTube and view the video.
Yeah, I saw Saturday's meeting on YouTube.
Yeah. I'm having a problem locating a document. Hold on one second here. The um.
I guess I have a question while we're waiting. While we're waiting, go ahead. In terms of the, the public comments, how do we incorporate? What, how do we? That was my point. What, that's what I was trying to get. Incorporate them. I mean. Some of the ideas I thought were really good.
Yeah, we're going to get copies from the secretary that took the minutes tonight.
Yeah, so we need really detailed.
Yeah, we can go through them.
Minutes.
Yeah, he's good. Oh, no, it's just.
Yeah, we'll go through and pick the ones.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's what, that was. That, that was the point I was trying to make. I tried to take some notes, but I didn't get them all.
Notes on most of them. We'll get, get them.
Pardon?
I got notes on most of the, the big points, but I think we'll get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want it to be official in the record here, so.
And, and we should um. I don't know what the process would look like to. I, is it publicly available if we take every comment we've received from the website or email?
Yeah, I.
Put it all together, maybe a big that.
I, I would do that as a, a comment page.
Yeah.
That we received somehow combining.
Find everything you received. Here's what we've heard from everyone. Marlock has reached out, whether through the website or emails.
Yeah, I mean, no matter what they said. Yeah, I, I, I.
Respectful.
It's transparency.
Yeah.
Definitely transparency. That's what.
Okay, Steve, what, what's happening?
I am having a problem finding the document, to be honest with you. I don't know why.
All right, is there any other way we can move forward on it?
I'll have to just find it and send it to you. That's it. I mean, I, yeah. I mean, I was just going to kind of go over it a little bit with you, but it's uh. I'm not finding the.
Is it in any of the documents we have in front of us that's got a page?
Let me take, look, did I send this to you? I'm, I don't know.
Article seven?
Yeah.
Okay, seven?
I'm trying to remember whether I sent you Article seven. Hold on.
No, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so, no.
I have one, three, six, nine, nine.
Yeah, no, I've not sent seven and eight out yet to you. So I will get that to you. We'll discuss it next week. I mean, it's just. It doesn't pay to. Uh, trying to find it.
So um, dates for the public hearings will be established when?
Well, I thought we have a date for the twenty fourth of May.
The twenty fourth of May. Yeah, I hope I'm in time.
I'm sorry, the seventeenth of May.
Seventeen.
Yeah, yeah. And the final meeting on the twenty fourth of. Of um, May.
Seventeenth of May is a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have our final meeting on the twenty fourth.
I may not be here either.
I will not be here. I'll be in.
Yeah, I'll be out, out of the country.
All right, let's, let's take a look at that.
Oh, wow.
Let's have everybody take a look at.
Why don't we look at our schedule next?
Yeah, that's, that week right now, I'm scheduled to go to the House of New Hampshire. It just depends on it's ready to go yet.
Zoom, you know, let's. Are you available on Zoom if you're not available in person?
Wifi there is awful.
Yeah, why, why are we all at the next meeting?
Well, wait, because I think we are, we know we have a problem. We have three people that aren't available.
Well, that's why I'm saying we should all look at it and come in with our calendars next. Well, that's why I'm saying we should all look at it and come in with our calendars next meeting. So we know what we have available amongst all the locks.
Just, we're, we're talking about the seventeenth and the twenty fourth right now?
Yeah, yeah.
And may, may I suggest that we don't do the email chain over top of everybody, but let's just send them to you.
Yes.
And then you can coordinate them.
Yeah, because it really gets overwhelming. Yeah.
It's been nuts. I saw you smiling and laughing, Andrew.
Are um, are we, are you done?
I am done. I am done.
Okay, thank you. So any other comments from any commissioners? If not, a ma- motion to adjourn, which we. Okay, all those in favor? We stand adjourned.
Have a good night.
Not much left of mine.